Good evening, all. Welcome. I'm Carolyn Rice, Chair of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, and I hereby call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM on this 11th day of August 2020. Pursuant to the state of emergency related to the COVID-19 pandemic, the Governor's Executive Orders, the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended by the Virginia General Assembly, and the School Board's April 7, 2020 Emergency Resolution, the School Board and selected staff members will meet in person at the School Admin Building. However, at this time, it is impractical and unsafe to allow other persons to attend the School Board meeting due to physical distancing and safety precautions related to the pandemic. Members of the public will be able to observe the School Board meeting through live streaming on vbschools.com, broadcast on VBTV Channel 47, and on Zoom. And we do welcome all those who are joining us tonight in that capacity. With that, I'll ask Madam Clerk for a verbal roll call, and that would include our remote colleagues.
In attendance in the School Board room, we have Ms. Hughes, Ms. Manning, Ms. Owens, Ms. Felton, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Rye, Mr. Edwards, Ms. Trenese Riggs, and Ms. Dottie Holtz. Via Zoom, we have Ms. Kimberly Melnick and Ms. Carolyn Weems.
Thank you, both of whom are participating remotely due to illness. So with that, I'll ask you all to join me in a moment of silence. And please stand as you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, student employee and public awards and recognitions. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Spence for some news that was publicized in the, in the, uh, this summer, but this is our formal recognition tonight. Dr. Spence?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. This evening, we would like to recognize schools that have been recognized by the Virginia Board of Education who announced their annual awards under their Exemplar Performance School Recognition Program, which honors schools in the Commonwealth for exceeding state accreditation standards, narrowing achievement gaps, and improving outcomes for students. Virginia Beach City Public Schools received nine 2020 Highest Achievement Exemplar Awards, which is more than any other school division in the state of Virginia. To earn this distinction, a school had to earn a state rating of accredited and meet the following benchmarks: 70% pass rate on state assessments in science and mathematics; 75% pass rate on state assessment in English reading and writing; no more than a 5% gap for schools with two student demographic groups; in English reading and writing between the lowest performing group and all the other students in the school; and the same in mathematics between the lowest performing group and all the other students in the school. So giving these outstanding benchmarks, we are excited to present to you these schools: Arrowhead Elementary, Green Run Collegiate, and Green Run Elementary, along with Kingston Elementary, North Landing Elementary, Ocean Lakes Elementary, Old donation School, Rosemont Elementary, and Shelton Park Elementary. Congratulations to all nine of our 2020 Highest Achievement Exemplar Award recipient schools.
Thank you. I know they've gotten a lot of personal outreach from any of us as well, just very, just again, wish they could all be here in person, but we, we did the next best thing, so hopefully they're listening in. So that brings us to superintendent reports. So, Dr. Spence, you're still on, and we look forward to that.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening again, Madam Chairwoman and members of the Board. Here are a few items of interest for you and our families to know for this week in August. First, the Division's five-part series of VB Safe Together information sessions began last week and will continue each Thursday until the start of school as we delve into different topics and answer questions related to the School Division's Fall 2020 Plan. Each session will be hosted by Division leadership, medical professionals, and content experts who aim to make the return to work a positive one for staff and the return to school positive for our students. The very first session was for employees, and we welcomed more than 1,000 unique viewers at one time, and even more listened during different portions of the session. The list of upcoming hashtag VB Safe Together sessions and the Zoom participation links can be found on the Division website, and previous sessions can be viewed on our VB Schools YouTube channel or on our Fall 2020 page. In the meantime, we also hope that you'll show us how you're keeping you and your family safe during this pandemic using the hashtag VB Safe Together and posting those pictures of your face coverings and social distancing strategies on your social media pages and tagging VB Schools. Second, a friendly reminder to our parents and guardians, if you've not yet had the opportunity to do so, please, please, visit your ParentView account as soon as possible and make your selection for each of your children for their Fall 2020 enrollment option. As a reminder, families selecting Option 1 will begin the year learning from home, but as soon as our health conditions improve per the metrics explained in the Fall 2020 Plan, we will begin face-to-face learning in the school setting for certain student populations. All families that choose Option 2 will learn from home for the entire first semester or term, or term of the school year. We cannot create student schedules and teacher assignments for the new school year without this information, so please do complete the registration verification process online by August 12, that's tomorrow night, at midnight. Those who do not enter that information will default to Option 1. And if you need any assistance in registering for a ParentView account, please contact the VB CPS Technology Customer Service Center at 757-263-1111, or you may also contact your child's school if you have any questions at all about the options or need assistance in completing registration verification. And finally, if you haven't already, please make sure you check out the Division's comprehensive Fall 2020 Plan on vbschools.com/fall2020. This page houses the Division's full plan and FAQ, which is broken down by topic, links to previously aired information sessions, and much more. It's also where any updated information will be posted as we move closer to our back-to-school date of September the 8th. Also, make sure you are following, following us on social media. For updates, you can find us on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram with the handle @VBSchools. Thank you, Madam Chair. This concludes my report.
Thank you again, Dr. Spence. Uh, Madam Clerk, has there been any change? You indicated no speakers on agenda items.
There are no speakers on agenda items at this time.
All right, then. So moving on to approval of minutes, the July 28, 2020 Regular Electronic School Board Meeting. Are there any modifications? Okay, hearing none. All, Chair will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Mr. Edwards and Mrs. Manning, a second, thank you. Well, we will do raised hand vote this evening. And Madam Clerk, as far as our remote members, they'll be doing it, the raised hand electronically, is that right? Okay. So, so I guess we'll just go ahead and...
So, ju, all, uh, we're raising our hands first for an affirmative vote to the approval of the minutes. We have 11 raised hands, and we need to get a confirmation from Ms. Weems.
11.
Thank you, Ms. Weems. It passes unanimously.
Thank you. Uh, now, uh, agenda item 8, adoption of the agenda. Any modifications? Ms. Owens?
Thank you. I'd like to ask that an action item be added to the agenda for discussion and possible emotion to discuss making changes to the existing 2020 opening plan to be added to the actions.
We'll get a clarity in a moment. That would be an action item C. Is there a second? Mrs. Riggs?
A second.
Okay.
And how would we?
Point of order?
Is it, is it?
Are, are we allowed to put something on the action that there's been no time for public hearing?
Madam Chair, I think, first of all, you need to actually state what the motion is, so they're aware of what the motion is. You can have a discussion on it. You can't, normally you wouldn't go at, my understanding is, I believe this is going to be a reopening or modification of a prior motion. So I think that could go to action the Board agreed to, but you do need to state the motion fully so you know what you're, what the Board is considering.
Please, Ms. Owens.
Okay. I'm asking for, uh, the motion for changes to the 2020 Fall Reopening Plan. I guess I'll just read it in its entirety. For the district to commit to adding the Virginia Beach-specific percent positivity rate after achieving the Eastern Region designated rate and case numbers as a final metric before moving to face-to-face instruction. To commit to a lowered percent positivity metric of 7% to better account for the unique situation in our district regarding the percent positive, uh, percent positivity of the military population, since it was discussed and understood that we will not have access to those numbers, and they will remain unaccounted for in the metric process, thus contributing to an inaccurate positivity rate for the region. With the CDC and the WHO recommending schools begin allowing face-to-face instruction when communities are at or under a conservative 5% test positivity rate, and conversely, the Surgeon General stating that schools may begin, uh, face-to-face instruction when communities are at or under a 10% case positivity rate. I chose to split the difference and propose the 7%. Next, that we commit to a staggered start for elementary students choosing the face-to-face instruction option. For an example, starting kindergarten or pre-K through, um, 1, and special education students only for the first two weeks that the metric allows for face-to-face instruction, and then phasing in the next grade levels as long as the Eastern Region positivity rate remains at or below the 7%. And this would allow for students and staff to become accustomed to the new procedures and logistics associated with the mitigation factors of returning face-to-face, ensuring that an asynchronous virtual learning option is available to students at all grade levels, which we've discussed already, and ensuring that the information is well-publicized to working parents. And then committing to explore a plan that focuses on bolstering the tools and skill sets available to students and staff that increase safety and well-being in a virtual environment. And the things that I would like to see looked at would be providing additional easy access virtual help on Chromebooks in the categories of tutoring, technical assistance, school counselors, suicide helpline, and child abuse helpline, accompanied by a counselor-provided curriculum that introduces the tool to all students, and ensuring that training and protocols are developed for counselors doing virtual risk assessments and other adapted processes, including a tracking system to track the number of crisis interventions or risk assessment tools completed by counselors on a monthly basis for tracking purposes.
So I will again ask for a second to the motion to add... So there was a question raised, Madam Attorney. This is not for discussion now other than to whether to just call a vote to add this to the agenda. So can you clarify?
Right, your, your question, you can discuss whether you want to add this to the agenda or clarifications on it. Because I believe you previously voted on the motion, I don't know that you need to bring it to information if this is specifically amending what you approved at the prior School Board meeting on July 28.
Okay, so discussion on adding this to the agenda for later discussion. Mrs. Manning?
Um, so I don't see this as amending a current motion. I see this as a new motion that we didn't receive until last night and that our public still has not received. So I'm very concerned with transparency because our public has not had an opportunity to weigh in on this. Like I said, I, I actually didn't, it came to us last night, but I actually didn't see it until today. So I haven't even had a chance to read it or consider it. And I'm just, this is a, this is a huge change. And, you know, we, who spent how long? Nine hours here in our last meeting talking about this? An amendment was, was, was brought up then. It was voted down. I don't know why we're bringing it up again. And, you know, while, while I understand, and I, I believe it's important to advocate for what you believe in, I also think it's very important to advocate for transparency and public input. And we're not getting any public input on this right now. And that's my biggest concern with this.
Mrs. Hughes?
Yes, and to piggyback on what, what Ms. Manning was saying, I think this is an end run around public notice. This should have been put out in time, either last, what, the two weeks ago when we discussed it, or put out by Thursday with the agenda so that the public would have time to look at it and weigh in. That's, that's who we work for, and it seems like, you know, again, we went through nine hours, and then when we get to a point where the public has no heads up, we just add this in. And this is just not, as a process, this is not appropriate.
Mrs. Anderson?
This is not a time for debating this particular motion. This is strictly for, are we going to allow discussion and adding this to the agenda? That's all we're supposed to be talking about right now. Yes or no, we're going to add it to the agenda, or no, or not.
That is what we're discussing.
Yes. So unless our attorney, uh, we, what the latitude here is, help...
Yeah, are we not required to, to give public notice on a, on a topic of this magnitude?
That's up to you. You, you publish your agenda, and by your bylaws, when you have a published agenda, someone on the School Board or member of the public wants to change that, they have to make an emotion, uh, to adopt, they have to adopt, make a motion to amend the adopted budget, budget, agenda. So because it went out on Thursday, and this information is since that time period, Mrs. Owens has to bring it to you to add to the agenda at this time. So whether you have to give notice or not is a decision you need to make for yourselves. It's not particularly required by law in that matter. You just need to decide whether you think there was appropriate notice or whether you want to go forward with this tonight or not.
Well, the, so we will call for a vote on whether to have it as an item to discuss when we get to that part of the agenda. Madam Clerk?
At this time, please raise your hand for an affirmative vote to move this motion to be discussed. A affirmative vote from Ms. Felton, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Rye, Ms. Riggs, Ms. Owens, and Ms. Holtz, and Ms. Melnick via Zoom. And Ms. Weems, how do you vote?
Carolyn Weems, yes.
Thank you. Ms. Hughes, how do you vote? Thank you. Ms. Manning, how do you vote?
No.
Thank you.
So we have, oh, God, please proceed.
Uh, we have eight affirmative and three no. Seven?
Nay.
Nay. Thank you, Mr. Edwards. So to re, to restate, we had seven voting for and four voting nay.
Okay, so it will be action item C, which we will get to very quickly. Thank you. Okay, consent agenda, action item nine. No items on the consent agenda. So we're, here we are with action. A Personnel Administrative Appointments. A motion to approve. A second, uh, that would be Mrs. Riggs, thank you, and Mrs. Anderson. Raised hand vote, please.
We have 11, we have 10 voting. Ms. Weems, how do you vote? Thank you. We have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. So, Dr. Spence, any, I know you have some announcements for us, yes?
I do. Thank you, Madam Chair, and again, members of the Board. This evening, I'd like to recognize, and of course, I will just reiterate that while we're in this current situation, we won't be bringing these folks in for a face-to-face recognition, but when we have an opportunity, we'll bring, you'll have to, you know, buckle your seatbelts because we'll bring a big, long group in to meet with you and just be introduced formally. But I'd like to recognize Elena Bone. She has served in Virginia Beach as distinction as a teacher at Christopher Farms Elementary School. Prior to that service, in Loudoun County Public Schools. She's currently a program compliance support teacher in the Office of Program for Exceptional Children. So I'm pleased this evening you've accepted our recommendation for her to be the next Assistant Principal at Glenwood Elementary School. So congratulations to Mrs. Bone. Also, this evening, you have approved our recommendation for James Smith, Jim Smith, uh, who is currently the principal at Salem Middle School, has previous experience here in Virginia Beach, is the Director of Middle Schools in the Department of School Leadership. He's been a principal at Kimsville Meadow, Kimsville Meadow, Middle, and Assistant Principal at Plaza Middle School, Assistant Principal at Pembroke Meadows Elementary, and a teacher here in Virginia Beach at Pembroke Elementary and White Oaks Elementary. This evening, I'm pleased you've accepted our recommendation for Dr. Smith to serve as the next Senior Executive Director of Middle Schools and the Department of School Leadership. And if I may just take a moment of privilege, I'd like to just extend recognition to him. I don't know that he's here, and I apologize for that. I know he's listening, and I asked him to come in here, but he may not want to because he probably knew what I was up to. A moment of recognition to, to Mr. Daniel Keever, who has served as the Senior Executive Director for High Schools in my tenure here, and as you all know, has a long 30... There he is. Mr. Keever, thank you for joining us. A long and robust career in Virginia Beach, both as a student, graduate, teacher, Assistant Principal Administrator, Leadership Coach. I mean, a very long and distinguished resume here in the city of Virginia Beach. We owe him our gratitude and congratulations as he moves on to be the next Chief Operating Officer for Williamsburg James City County Schools. Congratulations, Mr. Keever. And you may have noticed that Dr. Smith will be moving into a position as the Senior Executive Director of Middle Schools in the Department of School Leadership for our community. Who may have interest in this, I'll point out that there was also concurrent with this, a reassignment. You all know that Cheryl Woodhouse has been serving in that role as Senior Executive Director of Middle Schools and has now been moved into the position of Senior Executive Director for High Schools, given her background and experience in the high schools as well. And so congratulations to her and to Dr. Smith for these new roles in leadership at a critical time in our school division. Madam Chair, that's it for me.
Thank you, and the best of luck to, uh, our staff in these very all-important new positions. So, action item B, Resolution Regarding Federal Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Cares, Otherwise Known as CARES Act Appropriation. So we'll first take a, a motion, uh, Ms., Mrs. Riggs, and a second, Mrs. Felton. And we have Mr. Farrell Hanzucker here for some information, a summary, and some discussion of... Thank you.
Thank you. I think it is now. Thank you, Madam Chairman, School Board members, and Dr. Spence. As you know, the, the CARES Act was approved by Congress. And with that CARES Act, uh, school divisions across the nation have received additional federal funds. You approved an amended budget for the school division on April the 28th. The City Council, and, and that amended budget reflected the $27 million shortfall of both local and state funds. It was about, um, 21 million or so of local and 7 million of state monies. The City Council adopted a budget ordinance on May the 12th, and we did not have enough information at that time to ask for an appropriation, include this in our amended budget. So that's why we're coming back now. We did send an application to the Virginia Department of Education. We have shared with you during your board retreat information about the CARES Act that we had at the time and the types of expenditures that we could make. And since then, we've developed a spending plan. That's been shared with you via email. The detailed spending plan has been. And so what this budget ordinance does is allows us to have the City Council appropriate the $10,141,569.51 to the school division so we can be spending that money. Some of those expenditures have already been made or are being made. And so when we, when these monies are available to us, and we expect that would happen within the next three weeks or so, we would reimburse for those expenditures that we've already spent. So that's really the details of where we are today. The resolutions just drafted by me in the normal format that we have to have it in when it goes to the city. Happy to answer any questions.
Yes, thank you. And I know some have, colleagues have followed up already with you, but the opportunities here for others. Dr. Spence?
I, I think probably just for the record, it'd be worth reading the resolution. I'm happy to do that for you all if you'd like, or Farrell, you can.
I can't...
I wasn't really volunteering myself. Okay, I, that's why I was trying to jump in and help you out, Farrell. Um, I'll just read it real quickly if that's okay with you all.
Please.
See, this is a resolution regarding federal coronavirus aid relief and economic security, or the CARES Act appropriation. Whereas the coronavirus aid relief and economic security, or CARES Act, was signed into law on March 27, 2020, and whereas the CARES Act includes a $30.75 billion education stabilization fund with three components, an elementary and secondary school emergency relief, or ESER fund, a governor's emergency education relief, or GEAR fund, and a higher education emergency relief, or HEAR fund. And whereas CARES Act ESER funds are for emergency relief and intended to address the impact that the novel coronavirus disease 2019, or COVID-19, has had and continues to have on elementary and secondary schools across the nation. And whereas CARES Act ESER fund allocations are based on each school division's relative share of Title I Part A Federal Fiscal Year 2019 funds. And whereas Virginia Beach City Public Schools has been allocated CARES Act ESER funds in the amount of $10,141,569.51. And whereas these funds were not appropriated to the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach in the fiscal year 2020-2021 budget ordinance adopted by the City Council on May 12, 2020. And whereas examples of the proposed spending plan include supporting remote learning through educational technology such as hardware, software, connectivity, assistive technology, and adaptive equipment, supporting the diverse needs of all students during school closure and when students return to school, which may include mental health services and supports, provisions for meal distribution and services allowable under the Individuals with Disabilities and Education Act, planning for and implementing extended learning and summer learning, and maintaining operations and continuity of services, including continuing to employ existing staff to the greatest extent practicable. And whereas the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach requests an additional appropriation of $10,141,569.51 into the categorical Grants Fund to be used for expenditures incurred due to the health emergency as permitted by the Virginia Department of Education, and now therefore be resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach approves the recommended uses of the CARES Act ESER funds as presented by the administration, and be it further resolved that the School Board requests that the City Council approve the appreciation, appropriation of CARES Act ESER funds in fiscal year 2020-2021, and be it finally resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official members of this Board, and the Clerk of the Board is directed to deliver a copy of this resolution to the mayor, each member of council, the city... to the Mayor, each Member of Council, the City Manager, and the City Clerk.
Thank you. So, with that, is, are there any questions, any questions this evening to present? Mrs. Manning?
Yeah, just a couple. Mr. Hansiker, are there any needs related to the impact of COVID that we weren't able to cover under the CARES Act, or that we don't have any other existing funding for?
I would just have to answer it this way. At this point in time, there, there aren't any that I'm aware of. But this is kind of a moving target, and so that could come up. One of the things that this CARES Act allows us to do through the Virginia Department of Ed is we can amend it as many times as we need to during, this actually grant is approved, and spending could happen through, from March 20th of this year, all the way through, I think, September of '22. So, there could be some things that we're not aware of right now. And if so, now, we only have the $10,149, but we possibly could move some money around if priorities change.
Okay, and that may answer my next question. I'm aware of some legislation that's going to be presented to try to help schools with costs for nurses. So, if the state allocates that funding for that specific item, then we could move that around. Because I think there's a line item in our CARES Act funding, I think, for that. So, we can move the money around if we need to.
Yeah, for the nurses, in our, our application, I think we asked for like $300, something thousand additional.
So, if the state provides that separately, then we could move that?
We could move this around.
Okay, thank you.
Right. It's likely, actually, it would be even better than that, because what they're really proposing in the legislation is a nurse in every school, which we already have. What we're actually asking for in that amount is additional support for the nursing services. But if we were to receive funding for a nurse in every school, SOQ, for example, all of that money then becomes available and could be used for other purposes, including issues associated with the pandemic.
All good to know. Anybody else? All right, so all those in favor of the resolution, please raise your hand.
Ms. Weems, how do you vote?
Carolyn Weems, yes.
Thank you. We have a unanimous vote.
All those opposed? Well, it's unanimous, okay. Okay. So, can you verify, you, you, thank you for verifying, Madam Clerk, okay.
There was no negative, there were no no votes to the vote.
Got it. Okay. So, item C, discussion. Ms. Owens? Okay, we'll repeat them. So, a motion now on what we are discussing, yes. Can it be summarized, referenced, or read the whole thing again?
As you've just recently read it, I think Ms. Owens could make the motion to open up discussions on and for approval of the amendment to the reopening plan, as she explained it. You may have to clarify cases.
Okay, I would like to make the motion to open up discussion for the changes that I've proposed and read just shortly ago for discussion.
Second. Mrs. Anderson? All right, floor is open for discussion. Mr. Edwards will keep track of. Okay, starting with. Discussion before, before a vote.
Well, but we, we got nothing to vote on unless we have a motion to approve what was earlier stated.
Yeah, I agree. Point of order, it needs to be made as a motion.
Okay. I'd like to make the following motion for consideration for approval, based on the, do you want me to just read it all the way again? Based on the, okay. The following motion, that we commit to adding the Virginia Beach-specific percent positivity rate after achieving the eastern region designated rate and case numbers as a final metric check before moving to face-to-face instruction. Commit to a lowered positivity metric, lowered percent positivity metric of 7% to better account for the unique situation in our district regarding the percent positivity of the military population, since it was discussed and understood that we will not have access to those numbers, and they will remain unaccounted for in the metric process, thus contributing to an inaccurate positivity rate for the region. Commit to a staggered start for elementary students, choosing the face-to-face instruction option. This gives the example of starting kindergarteners or K, pre-K through 1, and special education students only for the first two weeks that the metric allows for face-to-face instruction, and then phasing in the other grade levels. And this allows for students and staff to become accustomed to the new procedures and logistics associated with mitigation factors of returning face-to-face. That we ensure that asynchronous virtual learning option is available to students at all grade levels, and ensuring that that information is well-publicized to working parents who may require the ability to schedule their students' educational time at later hours in the day, and that we commit to exploring a plan that focuses on bolstering the tools and skill sets available to students and staff that increase safety and well-being in a virtual environment, such as providing additional easy-access virtual help on the Chromebooks in the categories of tutoring, technical assistance, school counselors, suicide helpline, and child abuse helpline, and ensuring training and protocols are developed for counselors, doing risk assessments and other adapted processes, including a tracking system to track the number of crisis intervention/risk assessment tools completed by counselors on a monthly basis for the tracking purposes.
Thank you. For the motion, a second?
I second.
Mrs. Rigs? Okay, discussion. Mr. Edwards?
Let me, first, I'd like to explain my nay vote on putting it on the agenda. But I, I'm very concerned about process. Process is important, and this is a hugely important thing, which we just flat-out did not follow the proper process for, for a public entity to handle any, anything, let alone something this important. But before we go any further and have discussion amongst the board members, I don't know to what extent this was worked with the administration as far as impact or anything like that, so. Unless there's objection from my colleagues, I'd like to hear from the superintendent and other staff that may be impacted by the, by it, so that we might have a more meaningful discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. I will say that Ms. Owens and I did have a conversation about this, and I was very appreciative of the opportunity just to talk it through a little bit. And anything I share in the moment, I can tell you, I've already shared with her. And so, I will say, and, and, you know, I want to be clear, always, we work at the direction of the board, and we understand the unique challenge of all of this and the pressures that you all are under. We, our obligation, I felt, was to give you a plan that we knew we could work, and we did so. I'm very comfortable with our plan. I stand by our plan and the recommendations we made in our plan, and I'm appreciative of the School Board's approval of that plan. My reaction to most of what's in here is none of it's unworkable. It's all workable. I mean, in other words, it could be done if the board went in that direction. We would, we could certainly change our metric and monitor that metric differently. I think I indicated during the last conversation around this that we, with or without board direction, could certainly already be, and already are, looking at the Virginia Beach positivity rate in addition to the eastern region, just to make sure there's concurrence there, and that we wouldn't want to come back if Virginia Beach was at 13% and, and, and we were regionally at 9%. So, I think we all kind of understand that. But certainly, if you wanted to codify that, I think we could accomplish that even without an amendment here, and just put that in our plan. Item three, I think we could figure out how to work out. Item four, essentially, we're already doing. I think we've already tackled item four in a lot of ways, so maybe a bit superfluous is my reaction to that particular one. And then, number five, I appreciate that it says "commit to exploring" versus a version that I saw come out earlier, which was "commit to doing", because I don't know exactly how to do that, and it would just be something we'd have to explore to make sure we could do that. I think all of the, the wants of that makes sense to me, but whether or not we could accomplish it as a division would be another thing. So, so that's my initial reaction, but I need to then layer on to that, the complication of this. And the complication of this is I sincerely believe, and I've talked with my team about this, that if we were to make these changes, then we need to stop our process today, and we need to start over. We have spent extensive time in communication with our, with our community about what this is, answering questions about it, and we would need to go do that again, and provide people the opportunity to then change their mind. Because it's conceivable with a changed metric, for example, that you could have any number of people who now feel more comfortable and want to change their mind about the Virtual Learning Center and go face-to-face. It's also conceivable that could go the other way, where somebody could say, "Hmm, I'm not comfortable with, with that lower metric, you know. To me, it seems like my child's going to be out of school even longer. I'm going to go do something different." So, I think the board would have to acknowledge, and I think it goes along the lines of the public conversation, that we would need to give people a chance to absorb this, have information about this, and then make a different selection. And I would say the same would apply to our staff. There may be more staff who are comfortable, there may be less staff, et cetera, et cetera. With all of that in mind, I need to remind you of the timeline we're under. Dr. Robertson told you, we're trying to do three months' worth of work in 10 days following tomorrow night's deadline. So, what I will say clearly and unequivocally on this is, if you pass this amendment, we will not be able to open school on September the 8th under this plan. So, I mean, just to be clear, we won't, we won't be able to do it. We will either have to ask for a delayed start to the school year, and I'd have to work with my team on how much time we would need in order to accomplish that, because we would need time to survey, time to get those results, then time to begin to, you know, time to call the parents we hadn't heard from, then time to schedule. And all of that would take us well into the start of the school year, or at least up to and close to the start of the school year, looking at the cal, and we have looked at the calendar. The, and so, the only then other option I think would be to move forward with the plan as is, except halt everything because of the metrics conversation if you were to amend it, and, and go nine weeks virtual, which would give all of us time to, to adjust to that. And I, again, am not recommending that. I want to be perfectly clear, that's not my recommendation. It wasn't my recommendation two weeks ago, and it isn't my recommendation today because I feel it's arbitrary. But this would force our hand to have to look at one of those two options. So, Mr. Edwards, I hope that's clear enough for you in terms of the administration's stance on this?
It, it does. I want to thank you, and I, I know there's a lot more people watching now than we had two hours ago during the workshop. But we listened for an hour and 40 minutes of what had been accomplished the last two weeks since our last meeting, and it's, it's a lot. A lot's been done, and a lot would now be undone if, if we do this. As Dr. Spence said, the fact that most of this was either going to be done or can easily be folded in without amending the, the plan, that, that, that's why I, I, I can't support it.
Mrs. Manning?
Yeah, thank you. I agree with Mr. Edwards regarding the transparency aspect in, in the process, and allowing our public to weigh in, because as of right now, they've not had an opportunity to do that. And I, I agree with Dr. Spence that if we did adopt this change, that people would, people would perhaps have a different idea of what they would like to do for their options, both students and teachers and staff. So, that is another reason why I can't support this. I think that if, we have a lot of people who are ready to get their students back to school for in-person learning right away, and I think that if we change this metric again and make it more stringent, we are going to lose enrollment of, of many students in our district. And so, for those reasons and more, I cannot support this plan, this proposal.
Thank you. Mrs. Holtz?
Hello? Yeah, you got me now. Thank you very much. I'm glad we are discussing this, because I think it is necessary. But I've always maintained that the yellow zone was too broad. I spoke about that at the last meeting, but I'm repeating myself. I prefer a 5% for safety reasons. A 10% positivity rate is not what is recommended by the CDC or the World Health Organization. In fact, it's double the recommended infection rate for returning to school. And even the great state of New York is requiring a 3% positivity rate, and they are going back to school. However, that is the only part of Ms. Owens' recommendation that I do approve of, lowering that rate. 7%, I don't get that. That's just a, that's just a number, you know, that was picked out of somewhere. However, I, the part about phasing in the elementary grade levels doesn't make any sense to me. Students and teachers are isolated in their rooms anyhow. There's not going to be any assemblies, because usually at the beginning of the year, the principal gets everyone together, and they have a huge school assembly. That's not going to be happening. There's no crowded lunchrooms. There's no play, playground interaction. So, it doesn't make sense to me that two grade levels will be entering the school building, and the rest of the school will be empty. I don't understand the reason for asking for that delay other than it is said they get accustomed to the new procedures and logistics. Well, every teacher's going to face that in her classroom with her class, and they have to find their own comfort zone within their classroom. They're not sharing or interaction, interacting with other classes, and even with other teachers. So, I find that unnecessary. So, at the moment, I really do not feel like I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have Mrs. Rigs, and then Ms. Owens.
Thank you for everybody who's speaking, and I appreciate that Dan asked Dr. Spence to share your, your thoughts on this plan or recommendation. And my thoughts are, as Dr. Robertson said, they have done three months in, three months or a month, and, you know, just this little bit of time. Again, this would give you more time to work on this. The speed that you guys have worked on and the pushing is, is just an astronomical amount to take in. So, I think that with, with this recommendation that Ms. Owens has recommended, I think this would give you more time to do that. I, I, again, in planning something of this magnitude with this little bit of time, this would give a lot more answers and time to answer. I think that you would get, I know you have people at the schools, not only the counselors and the administrators are calling parents because they haven't responded, but the parents haven't responded because they don't have their answers. And I, and I get it. I, I, there's too many answers you can't give. I, I understand. But as we have more time, then you've got more chance to answer some of this. And some of it, you can't answer until you get right into the middle of it. I get it. So, but if, because of that, I think you would get, if we added this and we voted on this, I think you're going to get a lot more people to respond, a lot more parents to go ahead and respond because they have a little bit more time. I don't think they feel comfortable with the 10%. That is, that is what I am getting from people. They're not comfortable with it. And so, and, and I know that Ms. Owens chose the 7% to kind of give a compromise between the it a compromise between the ten and the five. So my thoughts are, this is, I mean, we're pushing at a just a cutthroat speed, and I get it. We don't have the time. We haven't, I mean, it's just been a vol volatile time. And but I think this would give us more time to work on that, more time for the teachers, more time for the parents, more, you know, to to set things up. It's a rush. So that's my thoughts, and I will be supporting it.
Ms. Owens?
Thank you. And I want to start-
We have Ms. Hughes after that.
Okay. I just want to start off by thanking my colleagues for allowing the discussion to at least happen. I think that this is a decision that needs as much discussion as as we can allow. We have continued to get feedback from our community well after our last meeting. And after our last meeting, I left feeling uncomfortable, uncomfortable with where we were. Our district is the only one in Hampton Roads that I'm aware of that is looking at the opportunity of sending students for face-to-face instruction within the first nine weeks. And I think that that's innovating, it's leading, and I'm proud that we're taking the harder route. But it's also a major responsibility, because we are the ones facilitating a risk that no other students or teachers in Hampton Roads will face. And I take that responsibility incredibly seriously, as I'm sure all of us do. Ultimately, the doctors who are on our medical panel won't have their names associated with this plan. I'm not even sure that we will know all the names and people that were at the table making those decisions towards the metric. I have spoke with Dr. Spence and some of the the doctors who were on the panel, and I was informed that it was the decision of the panel going in, that their names and specialties would not be released for a variety of reasons. And I know that there were a variety of professionals at the table, but without their names, without their titles, without having the ability as the board to ask questions to the full group and to have input and perspectives from both those that were strongly in agreement with what they came out with, and those who were not in favor of their plan to get their input. I think that we have to weigh that. I asked in a Zoom meeting with the doctors this week about school districts that have reopened for face-to-face instruction successfully with community metrics at or above the five percent mark, that have done it successfully, that have not had to close back down. Nobody was able to give me any examples of where it's happened successfully. They stressed that they feel confident that it can with the correct mitigation factors, and that we are that that's where the the strength is going to be in making sure that we have the mitigation factors in place. My significant other is in the military. He signed up to risk his life as part of his career. And even with that commitment, his command is not currently placing sixteen people in a room for hours at a time. We've had the administration tell us today that they're confident about the plan, but at the same time, it's like doing a thousand-piece puzzle in the dark with fifty pieces missing. We were told that they're coming together, and I appreciate all the work that they've done. I appreciate the teachers. I appreciate the administration. I just want us to be moving forward erring on the side of caution. Dr. Roberts had said they're pulling together and that they're going to live and die on Team Elementary. And we're going to be part of that decision on live and die on Team Elementary. And so I appreciate us being able to at least have this conversation. And I'm not tied to the phasing and how that that would work. My concern with the phasing, and I'll forget it, is primary primarily the pre-K kindergartners and perhaps special education students having an opportunity to enter the school building and have their routine at least a couple of times before the other six hundred students are there. Having a rising first grader right now and having done kindergarten drop-off on the first day of school, in the first week of school this this school year, I was able to see what it's like for kindergartners who haven't separated from mom and dad, particularly kindergartners who've been attached to mom and dad for the last five to six months. And having the thought of having them do that separation, where moms and dads aren't going to be walking kids down to the classroom like they typically would and giving them that reassurance. They're going to be met at the door or at the bus by masked teachers. Those kids aren't going to see their teacher's smiling face reassuring them. The teachers aren't going to be able to be taking children by the hand or helping them to pull off of mom's leg, all the things that happened this kindergarten year when I went and did drop off. The thought of having that happen with six hundred other kids in the school, trying to figure out where they're going and keeping the spacing and getting through the bus loop, just felt like maybe we should look at allowing an opportunity, a few days, a week, something for those students who are going to need that extra reassurance. When we're looking at it in terms of, I keep hearing about mental health and trauma-informed, it's a different, it's not the same school that they're going back to. Like Dr. Spence said, we are building two new systems from the ground, and I just want us to be mindful of the speed that we're doing it in. And so I I appreciate the discussion. I appreciate that you are allowing the discussion. And I wanted to have an opportunity to bring forth some of the overwhelming commentary that I'm getting from teachers and the community. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hughes, and then Mrs. Weems.
Okay, as far as the panelists go, only because I heard Ms. Owens bring it up, one colleague did ask who the panelists were, so that we might be able to ask them questions, and was told that they didn't want their names revealed. However, last week before our meeting, one of the panelists called me at home and got the impression that administration did not want them to release their names. So I don't know if there was a crossed wire there, because this person had no problem calling me at home, giving me the name, and telling me what that person's recommendation was. As far as this particular motion, I'm not going to be able to support it for three reasons. And one is the process. We need to be transparent. When we put motions out that we're going to vote on, that are going to change things that we do, major changes, those need to be put out in time for a public hearing. Had this been put out in time for public, the public to know to come in here and speak with adequate time to prepare for that, that would have been different. But that that didn't happen. This came less than twenty-four hours before this meeting, and some people didn't even notice it this morning. You know, if you went and checked your email yesterday afternoon, you might not have checked it again until this morning. And I just, I don't think it's okay to circumvent the public like that. The second reason is that, as Dr. Spence mentioned, they did a whole lot of work in a short period of time, and changing gears to this extent means asking for a later start time and scrapping everything that we've done. And while some people are happy with the decision and some people aren't, at some point, the resolve, you know, just having a clear path is is a relief to people, and they can at least make a plan. And well, I combined two of them. Oh, so I also feel that the more that we change this and and get the percentage lower and lower and lower, the more we get to a point where there's a possibility of some students not getting back to school at all this academic year. And and I think that's a problem. I think even people that want to wait a bit longer would be disheartened at the thought of their children not being able to return to school in person at all for the entire academic year.
Thank you, Mrs. Hughes. Mrs. Weems?
Are you with us, Mrs. Weems? She had she told me she was having some trouble hearing you from your microphone. So, Miss Weems?
Ms. Weems?
We can work on that. Go ahead to Mrs. Anderson from now.
Hi.
Great. Well, I'm clear. Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Yes, for some reason, it takes me about five clicks to unmute myself. Yes, thank you. Yeah, I'm not going to be able to support this. I I too agree that it's just too late in the ballgame. Two weeks ago, we spent nine and a half hours. Some of us agreed with the vote, some of us didn't. I think however we voted, there was a level of uncomfortableness on on whatever vote you were going to cast, because there were so many different opinions and and different camps on this issue. But as, you know, starting two weeks ago, when the majority voted for this plan, in my opinion, the eleven of us need to get together and answer questions and write in questions and try to make this plan go forward, whether we completely agree with it or not. And I know that's what I've been trying to do. This last minute does, you know, motion does change everything. I mean, we've got the surveys, you know, tomorrow's the deadline. And so to me, we would have to start a complete survey over to all the parents and teachers and staff, because this would change their opinion. And I think part of the problem is that, you know, there's so many moving parts, and and this motion would then throw another huge moving part and and create a lot of a lot of confusion, because that's what's happening now, because there's so many questions to be answered. And we just, I think we just need to stay the course. We made the decision. It was a majority vote. We need to move forward and make sure it happens in the best way possible. And so I'm not going to be able to support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Weems. Mrs. Anderson?
I want to be perfectly clear to start off with. I really, really want our students to go back to school, because as a as a former teacher, I know that the classroom setting is the best place for academic learning. And I don't want it to be delayed. But from the first time I saw this administration's proposal, I felt that the ten percent positivity rate for the beginning percentile of the yellow zone was just too high. And I spoke to administration about lowering the metrics and brought it up at our last meeting, and you know, when we voted on the plan. And I expressed that to Dr. Spence earlier this past week, that that I was not still not happy with the ten percent. So this past Sunday, I was able to meet with the with two of the doctors that were part of the panel that helped to help the administration develop the plan. And my first question to them was, how and why did you choose the ten percent positivity rating as the benchmark to begin the yellow zone for phasing in our students to return school? And their response to me was that the ten percent positivity rate was what was used when the governor put us in level in the level three zone. And the second reason they gave me was because they felt that we needed to start somewhere. Well, that didn't that didn't go well with me at all. As I realize that the doctors, I they're all highly qualified in their field, and I'm not arguing about their credibility or the professionalism. I appreciate the time and the effort that they've given to the school division and helping to come up with this plan to follow science. However, their explanation for choosing ten percent as the benchmark for the yellow zone didn't convince me that it should be that that was the right percentile for starting somewhere. But that just, I was like, what? I still feel it's too high. In fact, anything above one percent is not good. However, we're never going to get to one percent unless we get a vaccine. And and so seven percent's not perfect either, but it's better than ten percent. Another reason why I feel like we should have lowered the metrics to lower than ten percent is because our eastern region positivity rate is skewed. It's inaccurate. And I think this was pointed out before, and I'm sure that that the panel realized that the military positivity rate is not averaged with our eastern region positivity rate. And I know the military does a good job of making sure that, you know, that they don't that they keep it a secret for security purposes. But however, you know, if an active-duty person has symptoms and and goes to get tested in a military facility, which they're ordered to do, by the way, they're not supposed to be tested, you know, with just any doctor, they have to go to a military facility, those results don't get averaged in with the general population. But yet, their children are still exposed to that, unless unless they, you know, they, I guess they could isolate themselves, but their children are still exposed to that. And they're going to bring that. They're part of our eastern region population. So it stands to reason that the eastern regions' ratings should be reflecting a higher percentile. So if we're looking at ten percent, then the eastern region ratings are really higher than that. Well, you know, Mr. Mr. Edwards and I were talking about it this afternoon, and he actually pointed out, he said, we really don't know what the military ratings are. Maybe they would bring us down. Who knows? But I've heard arguments that we're really moving the the peg further or ways we get closer to the target, or that we're changing the rules after the fact. However, we've known all along that this pandemic is ever-changing. It was pointed out earlier this afternoon that, you know, this is a moving target. The CDC's even changed their recommendations after they put out guidelines. So by lowering the metrics now shows that we are being ever-watchful, watchful of what has happened in other districts around the country and the world after their schools opened. We need to be mindful of what other school districts have done and what happened to them. So far, I've not heard of a school district that went back with a community positivity rating as high as ten percent and had good results. The ones that are having good results are going back with much, much lower community positivity rates. So the other thing that plays into the success of opening schools, as was pointed out earlier, was the safety mitigation efforts. In fact, I I saw Dr. Fauci on TV last night. He he even emphasized that wearing a mask is essential in large groups, and especially when distancing can't be done. I'm not convinced that we can actually put the distancing measures in place that we need to protect our students and staff. So by going with the the seven percent positivity level in the eastern region is or starting as a starting point for gradually returning to school, it may give us more time. Now, maybe we don't need to put all these measures into a into a an actual vote. I feel confident in our in our staff and our administration that that they would use some of these suggestions, whether we vote to do this or not tonight. I really do. Because I know Dr. Spence has children of his own in our school system, and I know he's not going to put on purpose any of our students at risk. He would never do that. So I'm going to vote in favor of this, even though it looks like I can I can count the votes right here on the dice, and I can tell you we don't have the votes to get this passed. But I'm going to vote in favor of it anyway, because I have to vote my conscience, and I believe in my heart that ten percent is too high. But that's the way I am, and I have to go with where where what my what my heart tells me to do. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Anderson. Mrs. Felton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I appreciate the board allowing the discussion, even though the process might look a little flawed. I just thank you for this process as well. I speak as a school board member and as a grandparent and as an African-American female. And most of you know, and most of the conversation has been that the African-American community and the community of color is most vulnerable to this COVID-19 virus. I recently have gotten calls or made my way to the emergency room with two parents and with children in Virginia Beach Public, in Virginia Beach Central Hospital. And they are both now there being checked for COVID, and they have grandchildren as well. The African-American community and the community of color is very concerned about the matrix that they're having to deal with. I spoke with Dr. Roland as well, and she gave me some good talking points. And one of the things that she said to me that really stuck out, she said, speaking as a white woman and a doctor, she said, I really don't know the full impact. She said, even though I am a doctor to African-Americans, she said, I don't know the full impact that they're feeling or the mental strain that they're going through with. "I don't know the full impact that they're feeling or the mental strain that they're going through with." To go into a lot of scenario about me, I've, I've, I've had to deal with a dozen or so relatives that had COVID, at least five to pass away. So I am directly concerned and is touched by this COVID. And those that don't believe it is real, I let you know that grief is real in dealing with it. But I'm, the, the bullet two that Ms. Owens has, about the 7%, is one of the most, that most favorite of her proposal, because I would like to see that changed. And I don't know if this is in the right perspective now, but I would like to make a substitute motion at this time to change the matrix and not go back until the ninth week period, if safe to do so. That is, that is my, my substitute motion. And I would just like to say that most of what Ms. Owens has in this list, I have, I have to say that our administration has done well to put it together. They have put together a well-sustainable packet for our students. But the one that I most favor and am thinking about is number two, about the 7%. So I put my substitute motion to change the matrix and not go back until the ninth week period, if safe to do so.
Till the end of the nine weeks?
The next week, yeah. Yes.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Are you saying that you're changing it to 7% also, or? And nine weeks? What if it's not at 7%?
I would like to know. I would like to substitute the motion of Ms. Owens. I'd like to make a substitute motion to the change to the matrix, yes, and not go back until the ninth, until the ninth week period, if safe to do so. Yes. That's what I'm saying.
Here we are again with two motions, like I feel like deja vu from two weeks ago.
Do you need a second?
Yes, we'll start with that first, and then I'm asking the attorney about a second.
Is there a second?
All right, well, I guess that takes care of that question. Okay. Okay, then we will continue a discussion on our present.
Chair, I just want to check with Ms. Weems that there's no second to the motion on the floor?
Ms. Weems?
Ms. Weems? Ms. Weems, you have a second to the motion? I have a second. I'll second that.
Mrs. Felton, can I ask that you're very specific about what your motion is? Are you adopting everything that Mrs. Owens had put out, including the 7%, but adding an additional condition that you not even consider returning until nine weeks?
No. I am only interested in the major change that she has. And that's all I have to put a substitute.
Only number two?
Only number two.
All right, so you would want, let me see if I can read this. So your substitute motion would be to commit to a lower percent positivity metric of 7% to better account for the unique situation our school district regarding, I believe Mrs. Owens has said, the percent positivity of the military population, since it was discussed and understood that we will not have access to those. Now, most to consider as a factor in the metric process because of inaccurate, that contributes to an inaccurate positivity rate. Then you would have another sentence that was said that you are moving that the school division remain completely virtual for the first nine weeks. Is that right?
Yes. Yes.
So let me just see if I can clarify, because I don't want this to become an issue later on. So you're saying after nine weeks, if there has been, the percentage rate is 10, 7% instead of 10%, and all the other conditions are met, then they could come back to school, or they would automatically come back at seven weeks? When does the 7% kick in?
At the end of the nine weeks?
It would be at the end of the nine weeks.
At the end of the nine weeks, you would start counting for the two weeks of them, or if it had been, if it was just as of, not end of nine weeks, if it is 7% positivity rate in addition to the, the 265, 100% population, and you would be considering the eastern district region, the Virginia reg, the Virginia Beach numbers also? Only number two?
Only number two. I'm not going, I'm just sticking with number two. I'm not adding the regions or whatever, but I'm just sticking with number two, if we can do that strategically.
Number two is the region?
Well, yeah.
Okay, let me, when do you want this? They completely stay nine weeks, and at nine weeks, you start counting for two weeks to see if you, or 10 days if you've got that rate? Or if at nine weeks, it's at 7%, they're okay to start opening face-to-face?
Correct. Yes.
Well, it's either or, so we're going to, let me go back again. At nine weeks, if it is 7%, doesn't matter how long, but if it is 7% at nine weeks, are okay to start opening? Or at nine weeks, do they start counting 10 days at the percentage rate? That's what Dr. Spence's proposal was. Would you would start, you wouldn't start for the first two weeks, but we would start counting. And if you had 10 days at the rates that they were looking at, I'm sorry, 14, I'm sorry, business days, 14 days at that rate, then they could start opening up. Are you saying they absolutely have to stay nine weeks virtual, and then they start counting? Or if at the end of nine weeks, they have been 14 days at the percentage rate, they're okay to open?
My, Ms. Linetti, I'll be making this a little difficult. So if you could repeat that again.
Okay, let me see. The way Dr. Spence's proposal had been that the school would adopted was that yours, other than some specialized groups, everybody stays two weeks on there, but you would start counting the first day school open. And once you got to 14 days, if you had met the percentage of the rates, then the school division could start opening up to face-to-face. So even if, if it all went well, two weeks after opening, you would be able to start in. Are you saying that you want everybody to stay nine weeks, no matter what? On nine weeks plus one school day, they can start opening again if it's at 7%? Or do you want them to start counting the two weeks, the 14 days at, after nine weeks?
Your first proposal, it's saying all of it, your first proposal, you said it first. Yes.
Okay, so let me see if I can correct this. So what you're proposing is that the, the school division remain virtual, completely virtual. If at nine weeks, they meet the 7% rate and the other rate that we're looking at, the number of cases, then they could start opening up face-to-face.
Correct.
Right, so everybody understand what that amendment is? So that's your substitute amendment, is what Mrs. Felton and Mrs. Weems have seconded. Is that correct? That's what you understood, Mrs. Weems? All right, that's the motion on the floor. At the moment, it's open for discussion.
Mrs. Manning.
So I like the puzzle analogy, so I'll go ahead and add to that. So I feel like our, we, we have half, we have the puzzle halfway together. The nearly impossible puzzle to put together, our staff has it halfway together. And if this passes, we're going to scramble it up again and make them start all over. We have to remember, this isn't just 10% positive cases. This is also number of cases, which we are still way in the red on that and probably aren't going to meet that threshold for a while. We did hear from three of the doctors who named themselves here in our nine and a half hour school board meeting. Then we asked them lots of questions and got lots of feedback. One of the doctors said, "At 5%, we may never get our kids back to school for two years, at 5%." She also said that factors of isolation, students have already died in this city from isolation. And that's not what's being considered here at all. Nobody is considering the fact that what, the depression, the suicide, the drug addiction, that's occurring because our students are not back in school. And that is something I'm not going to let go of. And I just want to reiterate what Dr. Spence said earlier. If this, if any of these substitutes pass, we will not, our students will not be going back to school on September 8th. There is going to be an even further delay after an already just unimaginable delay that they've already had, at nobody's fault. So I, I just, I just really hope that this does not pass.
Thank you.
Dr. Spence wants to talk.
Dr. Spence?
Could I just offer clarity to that? Yes. So my comment was, under the new plan proposed by Ms. Owens, we would not be able to begin school. We would not be able to reorganize ourselves and have school scheduled for that new plan after we had received that information from folks. I just want to be clear. If, and that's why I said the only other choice you'd have in front of you, I think, is the substitute motion that Mrs. Felton put on the table, because we just simply wouldn't have the time to operationalize it any other way. That, I just wanted, so, just a little bit of clarity, but yes, to your point.
Well, but I, I still think that we would need to provide options to our families. They've already made those choices, option one or two.
Yeah, we would need to, to be, that's a great point, and to be very clear about that. Then the only way to move forward to get school started would be to move forward with the decisions they've already made, and then keep everybody virtual while we allow people to make new decisions. That's the only way, that's the only way we could possibly move forward at this stage of the game.
So we'll continue with the queue, but because I haven't had the opportunity yet to share. And, you know, and the emails come to the collective board, and you know that I do respond on behalf of the board. And I'll repeat what I repeated two weeks ago to the public listening in that, you know, to thank everybody who did weigh in in the last 24 hours. And for me, it was a personal choice of, well, do I read every single one carefully? Or do I, do I, you know, just try to answer 10 or 20%? And I still think I made the right choice to read them all. But we've been, we've, we've been collectively getting feedback the last two weeks, as well as the last two months. And, I mean, I think what's apparent is this, this whole pandemic situation is so unique for us as a school board too, because there's a whole spectrum of opinion. It's not that it's a, it's typically our decisions are, do you, do you go with this start time or not? You know, where there may be a few choices for start time. But, but, but they're just as honestly this continuum of opinion. And most people are somewhere in that middle. And we welcome input from wherever people are on the continuum. But I, I consider that, I consider that we are, oh, we are offering a virtual learning academy. So for any families with students concerned about the metrics, that is their, that's a wonderful opportunity for them. And for teachers who will have a second chance to opt for that. And I do understand, and I, I was a classroom teacher myself at some point, at a point, and my parents were, and many friends are. And I understand there is that some sacrifice and some temporary reassignments. But I think we have to get back to one of the messages tonight, that we're all in this together. There has to be some degree of flexibility to make it work. And that's, that's what I will share at this point. Okay, so Mrs. Weems.
Can you hear me? Yes, I can hear you. All right, yes, I, I just urge my colleagues, we have got to move forward. You know, we, we did this two weeks ago. Now we're getting last-minute changes to a, to a decision that is very, very big and impactful for our staff, our students, and our families. And I just feel like the more that we're talking tonight, the more confusing everything's getting. And we did this two weeks ago. It is a decision that is going to make a third of the people, whatever you, whatever we decided is going to make people upset, you know. And it, we're not going to come to a decision that's going to please everybody, because there's just no way, and we know this. We're going to have that sense of uncomfortable feeling, because if you vote one way, you're, you're sliding the, the mental, social well-being of, of students. If you vote another way, you're sliding the, the staff. If you vote one, I mean, we could go on and on and on, and we did this two weeks ago. We gave clear direction to Dr. Spence two weeks ago, to move forward with his plan. That was clear direction, a majority vote. He has done that. And now we're trying to backpedal, because we've got some emails, and I appreciate that. But this is too big to keep backpedaling and not moving forward. As far as the medical expertise, we heard from them Thursday night. There was a great hour-long, I guess, a FaceTime with, I think, three or four or five doctors. I listened to it the other night. They gave some great medical. And that too, we could fill that room with 50 doctors, and they would all have different opinions. I have talked to doctors who would say, "My child would be in the building September 8th." I've talked to doctors that says, that have said, "My child would not be in the building for the whole academic year." I mean, we could go on and on and on, different opinions, different situations. We are, and we have offered virtual learning, as Ms. Rice said. But the main thing is this, we have got to stay with the process. We can't be changing and bringing last-minute confusion. We gave Dr. Spence clear direction two weeks ago after nine and a half hours. Because now, if we change it again and get emails, you know, two or three weeks from now, or we're going to change it two weeks from now. I mean, we have got to just bite the bullet. This is the plan. This is how we directed our superintendent to go, and he's moving forward. And then, of course, he's going to take into account everything that, that we've, we've brought up. And we're going to get the kids in the building as soon as possible, when it's safe to do so. So I urge my colleagues to please stay with the process, that the community knows that works, works well, and that we have already decided on, and let Dr. Spence and his staff continue the work, continue putting the puzzle pieces together, so that our community can get some answers and continuing, continuing to get answers on specifics, so that they know what's going on, and so that they can feel confident in our decision, and that everyone can move forward to make this happen.
Thank you. Is, is it Mrs. Haltz? Mrs. Haltz?
Thank you very much. I also would like to address on the plan. Excuse me? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I'd like to address on the plan that Ms. Owens has put forward. I didn't mention it before, because I didn't be, I didn't want to be too long-winded, but four and five on that plan, it says, "Virtual learning option available to all grade levels." They want, she wants the administration to.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Mrs. Haltz, I was reminded we're now addressing specifically Mrs.
Oh, well, okay, well, I'll hold off.
The substitute motion.
I have, if the person who was making that motion wasn't quite sure about what they were saying, and it was so convoluted, I can't support that.
Understood.
So, okay, I'll hold off.
So I suppose I should ask for if we're, if we, we, if we are ready for a vote on the substitute motion?
Yes, I have a mind.
Okay.
I have a mind for a while, trying to respond. And first, I have to say, when lives are at risk, we don't rush this. And that's what we're talking about. And I appreciate everything that our administration has done. They have worked very, very hard. I've said it many times to Dr. Spence and the rest of you, I wouldn't want to be in your shoes. The work you've put into this is astronomical. But we're still talking about lives in at-risk. And we've also talked about, just tonight, 90% increase in COVID-19 cases among kids over this last month that opened. Now, we met two weeks ago. And two weeks ago is when we gave him the okay. But things have changed as this whole virus is going to change. And we've recognized this all along, as the country has. But because these, these schools have gone back with even lower than 10%, and now kids are having cases of COVID two weeks, and that's just in two weeks. So I'm talking about lives here. If other school systems can wait nine weeks, why can't we, in the safety of our children and our staff? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Oh, okay. So are we ready to vote on the substitute motion?
I just wanted to make sure that I addressed, kind of following up on Ms. Riggs and Ms. Manning's statement about the mental health and social well-being. Ms. Manning's statement about the, um, mental health and social well-being, uh, and that we've, we've already lost kids. And I think it's important to recognize that mental health and social well-being are obviously incredibly important, and it does, lives are always in the balance. But I think we also need to be realistic when we say that school is not, school unto itself, face-to-face instruction, is not the answer to mental health problems. Mental health treatment, identification, resources, services, those are the answers to mental health problems. Since I've been on the board, when schools were open, we've had students commit suicide in our district. Having face-to-face instruction was not the answer. We needed more services, and we still need more services, and it's a separate, but equally important conversation and topic for us to be focused on the safety of mental health and services that we can look at, which is part of why the bottom of my proposal is talking about having suicide hotline, child abuse hotline, those things added to our Chromebooks. But it stands separate but equally important to the safety issues that we're talking about in relation to COVID. And so I, um, follow what Ms. Riggs was saying, and I think when we were looking at the doctor's seatbelt analogy, having something come on that people were going to be resistant to, and finally, people got on board with wearing seatbelts. Each year, as new safety information, each year, throughout that process, as new safety information was learned, we moved that goalpost for safety, before it was just, okay, in the front seat, you need seatbelts. Now we need them in the backseat, but they're just lapbelts. Now we need them across the chest, because we've learned additional information that makes us need to change for the reason of safety. I think that as a district, if we're getting additional information that affects safety, it's worth the time, it's worth the extra discussions, it's worth whatever we need to do to have that be a priority, and so I'll put that, and I am ready for the vote.
Okay, can we ask for?
Uh, Madam Chair, Madam Chair, Ms. Melnick has her hand raised on the Zoom.
Mrs. Melnick, please proceed.
Okay, I hope, I hope I'm not all over the board here. Um, I just want to say that, uh, sometimes leadership is really difficult, um, but the truth is, is that leadership matters. And, uh, and what I have seen over the last five months is that we have witnessed leadership at its finest. Um, our division is, has put forth a, a really solid plan that we should all be able to get behind. Our division has once again emerged as a leader in this very difficult time. One thing I want the public to know is that I, along with all of my colleagues, friends, uh, every stakeholder, uh, our, our staff, um, we have had many sleepless nights. As of right now, I'm sending my boys back to college tomorrow, and I have to rely on someone else's expert opinion to make the decisions for my kids, and it's, it's a very, very difficult thing to do. But, I, I, I truly believe that, based on our current numbers, um, I, I don't think we're going back to school anytime soon. But that being said, this is the honest truth, I, I don't, I don't know how to vote. I, there are merits to both sides of, um, of this issue. Um, as we, as the weeks tick by, um, they're changing. And we did send forth our staff with direction to finalize this plan, and they've been working tirelessly to do so. But I think, in order to, to vote no, I need some assurances from, from our staff that, that, uh, if we see what we see out of Georgia, that, that we're going to shut this division down in a New York minute. I can't have any of, any of that. That if we are, if we are on the border with numbers, that we will err on the side of caution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Melnick. Maybe this would be a chance for Dr. Spence with, what, to explain a little more the latitude that the approved plan provides, speaking to that last point.
Sure. Georgia's interesting, it keeps coming up because of that picture of those kids in the hallway. And one of the interesting parts about that article, if you read it, was that both the superintendent and the principal defended their behavior, and indicated that they, they were okay with kids walking around, because it was a personal choice, and that was following their state guidelines. So I think it is very important, at least, that we compare apples and oranges when we're comparing things, and I recognize, Ms. Owens, to your point, too, that folks have said they're, you know, they can't give you an example of the schools, well, it's, it's the second week of August. Schools don't open universally before the second week of August, and so, yeah, it's going to be very hard to give you any examples of where this is working, you know? And, 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 and certainly, there are going to be cases as we open up schools across the country where it's not working, and I think there will be cases where it is working, because there's cases elsewhere in the world where it is working, right? So, so I think there'll be cases where it'll be both, and it's agonizing because of that, right? Because that possibility exists. I've said to a few of you that I've talked about, and, and let me be clear about this for our community that's listening, mitigation strategies begin with the culture shift that we talked about in the first couple of our, our sessions with you about these issues, right? It begins with that culture shift, that willingness to adhere to doing the things that keep not only yourself safe, but other people safe, right? That willingness to put a mask on, and we've said in our plan, masks are mandatory, you have to wear a mask. You're not coming to school as a student without a mask, and you're not coming to school with, without a mask on as a staff member, and so, because that's what, everybody wants to talk about what the CDC says, and WHO, that's what they say, put a mask on. Put a mask on, and you can effectively distance at three feet. Six feet is the magic, but three feet, you can, you can effectively distance with a mask on. So if that stuff isn't happening, and believe me when I tell you, my team, all of us, will be in school every day, uh, and we will be looking and monitoring and visiting, and we will be understanding how our plans are putting into place operationally, and if it's not happening to, to Mrs. Melnick's specific question, I will shut it down. I will call a snow day, you know, and I, and I will, uh, do it under the authority that I have to do that, and then I'll come back to you all, and we'll talk about it some more, about what do we go, where do we go from here? The latitude in this, to your specific question, Mrs. Rice, the latitude in the plan around the metrics is, when we get into yellow, we bring back the group of students that we've identified in that group, and then if we're in yellow for a while, which is realistic, that we could be in yellow for quite some time, it's not realistic, as some of you have mentioned, to, that, to think we're going to get into green. That if we get into yellow and we're there for some time, that if our mitigation strategies are working, which we have confidence they will, but we can't know, because none of us have done this before, if they're working, then we would begin to bring back some of the other students that we have not identified. Uh, and so, I mean, that's, that's how I would respond to giving you, uh, some assurance around that, but, I mean, I can't give, I, I mean, I, I appreciate all of the comments this evening. I can't give anybody in this community any assurances that we can mitigate all the risk. We've talked about this over and over again. It, it cannot be done. Five percent, by the way, the number that keeps getting thrown around, five percent, five percent sounds good. Why? Why does five percent sound good? You can't mitigate risk at five percent any more than you can mitigate risk at ten percent, you know, in, in, in a completely full way. You still have to wear masks, you still have to do the things that you're supposed to do, you still have to have, it changes, literally would change nothing about all of the decision-making that we have to do relative to health mitigation strategies, relative to the choices that people have to make about whether or not they're comfortable, whether or not they have a health condition, whether or not their family members have a health condition. None of that goes away, five percent isn't a magic number. Five percent is something that, uh, the director of the CDC stated in an offhand comment in an interview. It's not published by the CDC, it is not their position, contrary to what you've been told. It was in an interview with the director of the CDC, where they asked him, well, what do you think? And he said, five percent. And then somebody said to Dr. Burks, who's on the White House Task Force, well, do you agree with, and she said, sure, I can agree with that. It wasn't a, like, that's the number we've arrived at through intensive research and study on the matter about when schools could open safely. That's not at all what's happened, and they haven't published those numbers. And so, so, uh, they all sound good, and the question I keep asking is, why? Sound good based on what? At, at some point, what we have to do is, we have to say, and, and I mean, and I mean this, like, literally for everybody who's spoken, like, at some point, we have to say, like, wha- what's our comfort level in bringing people back? And I think that's where you have to vote, that's where your line has to be. What's our comfort level in bringing people back? Ten percent, five percent, seven percent? What's your comfort level in bringing people back? Because this thing is not going away anytime soon. We don't have a vaccine, we don't know when we'll have a vaccine, even once you get a vaccine, it builds, takes time to build up. I mean, you, you understand if you, like, look at all the, the research around that, you, you build up herd immunity through vaccination, but you're talking about globally having to vaccinate billions and billions of people, and that isn't going to happen overnight. So if the threshold is, everybody is safe, and I can, I can be comfortable with that, we're not going to get there. So what's your threshold? Like, where does, where do we say, the mitigation strategy, strategies are in place, the community transmission is in a place where, where the health experts say to us, and, and I think at this point, that just depends on who you listen to. I think that's one of our biggest challenges, right? Like, wh- where the health experts say to us, it's, it's at a rate that's low enough that the mitigation efforts that you have in place will provide the maximum amount of safety, uh, uh, and sense of security for the people who come into our buildings. But I'll also tell you, if people don't follow the rules, that's out the window. I was telling the people the other day, I was, had to go down to the oceanfront to a bike shop and pick something up. I drove down from Fifth Street to Thirty-first Street, and because I love to see the water and just peek through the hotels, I drove down the strip. Bad idea in the summer, but anyway, um, not one mask between Fifth Street and Thirty-first Street, not a mask on a soul. And I thought to my, that, that might be a minor exaggeration, I mean, it was probably ninety-five percent to five percent. And, and until that stuff changes, there's no way, as the superintendent of schools, I can tell you that we're going to be safe in our, in our schools, but we're, we, we can, you know, a hundred percent. But what I can tell you is, we can insist upon the culture shift. We can say, if you don't wear a mask, you got to go home. If you're, if, if a teacher can't wear a mask, then we're going to provide accommodations for them, you know, we, I've talked with some of you about what those might look like if there is a true medical issue, and those medical issues have to be defined. So, I'm sorry, I, I went so long there to try to answer that question, but I, I can't give any of you assurances on this vote, that if you make a vote one way or the other, you're making the exact right decision.
And I'll just reiterate that we are, families are, have the choice of virtual or in-person, and a significant number of our families, and the thousands, are, are willing with the approved plan and those parameters, and the mitigation factors that staff continues to work on. They're telling us that they are, they're ready to give this a tr- a try when, when the metrics hold, and when the division, and, and we're still looking. Dr. Bergen, would you mind sharing, for everybody's sake, I, I pinned, pinned him down for dates today, so that everybody was clear, because there is some, uh, confusion in the community, and perhaps even among the board on the, the start of school date of September eighth. You know what I'm getting at, and the rest of what you told me, if you could just share that with everybody. And by start of school, we mean everyone starting virtually, of course.
Well, the plan says that, once both metrics are in a yellow, that we circle the calendar. So they both have to be within a yellow, and then we look fourteen days out. There, these metrics are a seven-day rolling average, so by the time they get to yellow, they will have been trending down for the seven days to get to the seven-day average. But for logistical reasons, uh, mainly for logistical reasons, but also reasons of health and delay in testing, and the, uh, lack of availability of testing, w- we, the administration, added to the plan, a fourteen-day wait period. So this is a hypothetical, that you've asked me, Mrs. Rice, but hypothetically, the day after Labor Day is the eighth. So if the metrics were trending down on the eighth, and they, they both reached yellow by then, which is not likely, uh, unless something dramatically different happens in the coming weeks, you would look two weeks out from there, which would be in the middle of a week, the twenty-second. We would have discussions as administration about whether or not it would make sense to bring everyone back in the middle of the week. But that would be the, that would be the earliest, would be that third week in September, uh, towards the end of September. Again, this is all premised on metrics trending down between now and then.
Thank you. It just seemed a good point, program, to bring that up. Okay. So we still have our substitute motion to vote on. So I, looks like we're ready to call for a vote on, on Mrs. Felton's motion. Should, after all this time that's gone by, would you like to re- pe- repeat it, Mrs. Felton?
Yes, thank you, I have a substitute motion. Um, at this time, to, um, here. Thank you.
See, number two is circled.
A substitute motion for, to commit to a lower percentage pos- positivity metric of seven percent to better account for the unique situation in our district regarding the percentage positivity of the military, since it was discussed and understood that we will not have access to those numbers, and they will remain an uncounted factor in the matrix process, thus giving a skewed positivity rate for regions, with the CDC and WHO recommenda- recommending schools being, allowing face-to-face instruction when communities are, are at or under a conservative five percent test positivity rate, and controversially the surgeon general stated that schools may be able to begin face-to-face instruction when communities are, are at or under a more liberal ten percent case positive rate. I choose, choose to put the difference between, she chooses between seven, and that is my substitute motion.
No, no, you said, and.
And.
The ni- uh, for.
And, and, uh, go back after the ninth week period. It's safe to do so.
Okay, so that was a refresher, it's already been seconded, we've had the discussion, so all those in favor of, of the substitute motion is just read, kindly raise your hands, and that includes our two remote colleagues.
Ms. Melnick, how do you vote?
No.
Ms. Weems, how do you vote?
No.
Thank you. Madam Chair, we have three ayes. I'd like the rest of the board to now vote in the negative, please. Uh, Madam Chair, please let it know that Ms. Hughes, uh, Ms. Melnick, Ms. Weems, Ms. Hughes, Ms. Manning, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Rice, Mr. Edwards, and Ms. Haltz have voted negative.
We're back to the main motion.
Okay, so the final vote was in numbers again?
Uh, three affirmative, eight negative, it did not pass.
Thank you, Ms. Madam Clerk. Now we go back to the, the main motion presented by Ms. Owens, and, uh, so any further discussion on that? Mrs. Haltz?
Well, I, I wanted to take up where I left off, because we were.
Yes, ma'am.
We were talking about this, can you hear me now? Yes? Um, I never did get to mention, uh, comments on number, uh, I think it was the last two that she had. Uh, she wants us to commit to exploring a plan that focuses on tools and support for teachers, especially technology, and giving training to teachers, but I don't understand why that's even in there, because we have already been doing that, and we've gotten reports th- uh, this evening from Dr. Kip and Dr. From Dr. Kip and Dr. Bergen, also Dr. Robinson. And perhaps, uh, classroom teachers aren't. I, I know there's been training all summer, but they've been to select group of people, but cla- uh, t- classroom teachers who are. Ten-month employees are not even back to work yet. So this training, I'm sure they will be receiving, and we've been assured of that by the administration, so. To put that into an amendment, I don't think is necessary. Um, so yes, that's another reason why we'll not, I'll not be voting for it, but. No matter what plan we choose, this one or the other one. It, I, I'm more concerned about, uh, teachers. The teachers who opted for, for, uh, number one, face-to-face. Because many of them felt between a rock and a hard place, and we've gotten dozens and dozens of letters from them. Expressing that opinion, the public doesn't see that. We hear it, and I think it's really good, so that they could under- they can hear some of the. They can hear some of the opinions that the teachers have expressed. They only had a, a four-day window to make a decision. A choice that they felt they didn't have enough details to make an informed decision. And I'd like to, uh, share some of these teacher concerns with you, so. Please bear with me because I think it's really important. Um, tonight we had a presentation on the instructional staff verification, I think. If I wrote it down correctly in my notes, eighty-six percent of teachers. Said they were, they wanted face-to-face. But this is what I heard from teachers, we all did, but the public didn't. It does not mean that it's sa- I think it's safe to return to s- face-to-face learning. I chose option one, not because I preferred it, because I felt pressured to select option one. And I had no time to think, think through this important decision. Another one, hey there, I'm a high school teacher who was selected face-to-face. I did so because I love my school and I did not want to abandon my program, however, it is not what I prefer. I prefer to teach my students in my school remotely. Another one, out of concern from being displaced from my home school, and that's what I was threatened with. No guarantee of placement would come to me starting the spring term. I'm a twenty-twenty-year-old, twenty-one-year-old educator in Virginia Beach school system. Not twenty-one years old, twenty-one years, so. I was forced to pick returning face-to-face in order to keep my job in my current school. Please reconsider the numbers that put teachers' lives at risk. Ten percent is way too high to remain in school. And my last one. A teacher says, I choose option one only due to the fact. That I have no guarantee or other information on what grade level I would have to teach at the VLC. We have not been provided sufficient information to make an informed decision about the VLC. So with so many unknown variables, I felt I had no choice but to choose option one. So when you hear about these high numbers of all these teachers. Who prefer that one and who are really dying to get back to school, and I do mean that literally. You, you really need to consider that. And I have had many teachers tell me, I'm now regretting my decision to return. Face-to-face, so I'm at, really asking tonight the administration to reconsider that. All parents have not yet signed up, and they still have a chance to change. And I hope we would give the teachers the same option to change their minds as well, now that they have all this new information. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Holtz, Mr. Edwards.
I'm, I'm pleased that the administration earlier, uh, very specifically. Indicated that teachers wanting to flip. To virtual. Um, for the very reasons Mrs. Holtz just pointed out. Would, would most likely have that opportunity. On the, uh, the, the military numbers, um. I. The, the, the military are almost. Uh, wh- when they're away from their commands, they are under such restrictions on what they can, what they can and, and mostly cannot do. I've, I've had events in, in, in different things and, and, and gone to places and, well, where's. They're not allowed, they all had to sign page thirteen's in their service record that said that they would, you know, and, and if they go out and do something. Stupid, like a lot of people their age are doing. Uh, they're, they're subject to serious discipline, so. Um, that was, again, Mrs. Anderson said that we kind of ban- bantered back on and forth on that, and that's why. Yes, the military numbers are not in there, but I doubt that they would make them any higher. The, uh. If we, if we put ourselves in a position of going out. If we change the matrix and, and go out and resurvey. What we are very likely gonna do is actually increase the number of. Parents that are gonna wanna come back. And that is going to frustrate. Uh, the ability to bring people back, because now we're gonna have more people than we can fit in classrooms and stuff. And, and where we are now. With, with the percentages, we can, we can work them in, and so. Even though I hugely believe, believe in parent choice, I don't think I wanna. Right now believe in re-choice, because I think it might make the, the whole plan a hu- a lot harder to execute. And last and finally, um, the. I don't wanna, th- there's gonna be new information every day. There's gonna be a lot of information every two weeks, and I sure as heck don't wanna sit here. Every two weeks between now and December, and second guess on what we're doing and where we're going and, eh, you know. And that's what we're setting ourselves up for if we change things tonight, because I guarantee you, we'll be back here, it'll be on the agenda. And we'll be kicking this can around. Uh, the entire fall and end of the winter.
Thank you, any other comments before we put this motion to a vote, uh, Ms. Owens, yes, we do have you, I'm sorry.
Thank you, um, I just wanted to, I guess, respond to a, a couple of the last comments. In reference to, uh, Dottie's, uh, comments about the, uh, proposal. Uh, I wanted to make sure I explained them, uh, she might have stepped out, that's fine, that number five, when I. Uh, talk about exploring, uh, a plan that. That, um. Is committing to bolstering with tools and school sets available to students and, and staff, that that is. In regards to mental health, student safety and well-being, not. Uh, the instructional training that they've been getting this summer, so I just wanted to clarify that piece. Um, and in regards to, uh, her statements about teachers feeling pressured. And that they felt like they were in between a rock and a hard place. Uh, part of what I am trying to do is, uh, hear them, hear them and provide something that. Makes them feel more comfortable, I think if the, one of the big concerns that Dan said is that this plan might make parents feel. More comfortable sending their kids to school and that more of them are gonna wanna do that, and so we need to hold off and not do that. Um, I don't know, that speaks to something to me, that if we're, we're doing something that is gonna make. Parents feel safer about their children having that face-to-face instruction, and so we want to hold off on doing that. Um. It's something that I would wanna weigh, and then just with the military's number thing. I wanna make sure that we're clear, it's not just the percent positivity, but since we have the two metrics, we have the. Uh, percent of case positive. Uh, and then we have the actual new cases per whatever, that their new cases aren't being counted in the number. So when we're looking, I understand the percent thing, but when we're looking at just straight positive cases. And we, when we start getting close on that metric, which is the one that we're saying is, is high now. That when we get down to that number of whatever our yellow zone is, two hundred and sixty-something. That they won't be counted in those, those positive cases in our region won't be counted. So it's not just, maybe the percent positivity might bring us down on the one side. But it, there's no way that it can bring you down on the other side, and it's not accounted for, so. That I, I'm good, I won't do any more comments, we can, we can.
And maybe just to be clear for the public, and I know, I stand to be corrected, but it's not that the divisions withholding this information, it's just not publicly released by the military. Okay. Mrs. Anderson.
So I wanna talk a little, a little bit about number three. On the list here that says, commit to a staggered start for elementary students choosing the F- the face-to-face instruction option. For example, starting kindergartners and special education students only for the first two weeks. That the metric allows for face-to-face instruction. And then phasing in the next three grade levels each week as the eastern region positivity rate remains below at. Or below the seven percent mark. Um. There is merit to this. And what she pointed out was, we all know, well, at least I do, who taught kindergarten for twenty-seven years. Um, I, I know exactly what she's talking about, when she's talking about these kindergartners who are. Hanging on to their parents, and most of them, oh, by the way, for the past four, five months now, have been home with their parents. They're really gonna, gonna experience this, you know, when they finally get to go. Um, this experience of, oh my god, I don't wanna leave my parents, I mean, I think we're gonna see more of that than we've ever seen in the past. I've had to do that before, where you try to drag a kid away from their parent, I don't like to have to do that, but sometimes you have to. But, but it really does happen sometimes. A- and I do feel like. Administration is aware of these types of things, and so I think that they'll take that into consideration, whether we pass this or not, at least I hope. I hope, Dr. Spence, I hope you will take this into consideration and think about possibly. Uh, bringing back kindergarten and first grade maybe together, or in preschool. Before we. Drag everybody into the elementary school and have all six or seven hundred kids at the same time. I do think that, I do think that that's something that is worth, has merit to it, and I think we should consider. Um, so I, I just wanna, you know, say that I'm in favor of that, I don't like to micromanage what administration does, I don't like to tell you what to do, but I do think this one has merit, so. Just wanted to speak to that, we've already heard my view on, views on the rest of it.
Okay, are, so we are ready. Was, was that a hand raised? Okay, so we are ready to proceed with a vote on the original. Motion, Ms. Owens' motion, which we all have in front of us, and I don't. So we don't need to read through it a third time. And that's with all due respect, right, and, and I think to, just to summarize, I think there, that. The board, that we've expressed merit in a number of, of these individual recommendations and, and some al-. Already in the works, i.e. the asynchronous virtual learning and the. The, the continued exploration of number five has my full support, and I'll be with you on that. And yes, staggering within short periods of time elementary, like Mrs. Anderson said, I think, you know, it's just, it's another idea for the staff to, uh. Deliberate on. Okay, then. So we are asking for a, I am asking for. Uh, all those in favor of Ms. Owens. Motion. Uh, to raise your hand now, virtually or in person.
Ms. Melnick, what is your vote?
Yes.
Ms. Weems, what is your vote?
No.
Thank you. Board members opposed to the motion on the floor, please raise your hand. Thank you, those opposed were Ms. Weems, Ms. Hughes, Ms. Manning, Ms. Ry, Mr. Edwards, and Ms. Holtz. There were five affirmatives and six opposed, it did not pass.
Okay, thank you all for this respectful, uh, discussion. So, m- moving on to the information part of the meeting. We have our gifted five-year plan. Welcome, Dr. DeVries, who's waited very patiently.
Thank you very much, good evening, Chairwoman Ry, Vice Chair Melnick, School Board Members, and Dr. Spence. I'm Nicole DeVries, the Director of Office of K-12 and Gifted Programs. I'm here this evening to provide you with a brief overview of the twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-five local plan for the education of the gifted. Which requires approval by the school board in accordance with state regulations. The complete plan was provided in the meeting agenda packet for review. I would like to acknowledge my gifted administrative team, whose leadership throughout this process has been critical to its success. As you're aware, the division provides ongoing screening, referral, identification, and placement of gifted students. Beginning with kindergarten and continuing through twelfth grade. The local plan encompasses the K-12 continuum of gifted services. That range from the gifted cluster services for students in grades two through ten. To services through classes at Old donation school, to independent study opportunities for students at the high school level. Having support structures in place across levels of service helps to position gifted students for academic success. And attends to their social and emotional needs. These support structures include gifted resource teachers directly working with gifted students. As well as providing instructional coaching to build the gifted cluster teacher's capacity. In gifted instructional strategies and best practices. In addition, ongoing work with school counselors, the review of underachievement data. And parent communication and collaboration efforts are approaches used to support the gifted students in our school division. With the goal of vertical alignment and transition, the local plan that is developed every five years articulates a seamless transition for gifted students. Between the elementary, middle, and high school levels, progressively preparing them for more challenging, higher-level work. Over the last eighteen months, over one hundred people participated, oop, sorry, excuse me. Participated across five subcommittees in the development of the twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-five gifted plan. The subcommittees reviewed the school division's twenty-fifteen to twenty-twenty local plan, as well as the proposed at that time. Um, twenty-twenty-five, uh, twenty, compass to twenty-twenty-five strategic plan. The National Association for Gifted Children pre-K through twelve, and gifted programming standards. VBCPS graduate profile, and other pertinent documents in order to en- ensure that this plan fully addresses and aligns. With compass to twenty-twenty-five, and our vision for the future of gifted education services in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. The twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-five local plan is comprised of six areas required by the state. Each area includes a goal and supporting objectives and activities. The full plan that you have describes each activity. As you read through it, you will notice that embedded are the action steps that we discussed during your July seventh school board retreat. Related to revisions to the identification and ODS selection process. Strengthening community support, and the strengthening of the gifted cluster model in comprehensive schools. The six areas required by the Department of Education include identification. With the goal of providing a systemic identified process that reflects the delivery of services. Some of the areas that we discussed at our July seventh retreat. Um, that are in need of revision and that we're currently working on, include the revision of the, and identification. Of the ODS selection process, and the refinement of the use of student interviews. The next area in the plan is delivery of services, with the goal of providing a comprehensive continuum of services. Which address the needs of all identified gifted students. Again, back in July, uh, we talked about some of the revisions to the program and the identification and selection process. Under delivery of services, you will see that we will, um, it, you'll see some of those indicated, for example, exploring options. To provide all identified gifted learners with learning experiences at ODS. And to expand the early scholars initiative or ESI opportunities into the secondary Title I schools. The next area in the local plan is curriculum and instruction, with the goal of providing differentiated curriculum and instructional opportunities. Reflective of the unique needs of all gifted students. Some of the things that we're working on that are also indicated in this plan. Is to provide a variety of opportunities to challenge gifted learners through the use of inquiry. Independent projects and specific gifted models and practices. independent projects, and specific gifted models and practices. The next area in the plan is professional development, with the goal of providing continuous differentiated professional development for all school staff on identification and identification and education of gifted and talented students. Some of the things we're working on in this area include to build GRT capacity for instructional coaching and to increase professional learning for gifted cluster teachers. The next area in the plan is parent and community involvement, with the goal of promoting the awareness of the unique needs of gifted students among parents, school staff, and the community. In this area, we are working to build, to highlight gifted cluster opportunities for gifted learners and to increase parent and community understanding of the identification and ODS selection process. You will notice that the area of equitable representation of students calls out the processes and opportunities that were previously established in the other five areas and is inclusive of students with diverse abilities, beliefs, and cultures during the identification and education of gifted and talented students. We are currently working on implementing a local norms process for the ODS selection, as we discussed in our July 7th meeting, and also revising identification and selection applications. Detailed and comprehensive information on each of these areas is available in the materials that you received. This concludes my presentation of the proposed Virginia Beach City Public Schools 2020 to 2025 Local Plan for the Gifted Education. We are confident that this plan allows us to continue to serve our gifted students well and sets forth a plan for strengthening gifted services across all six identified areas within the plan. I welcome any questions at this time.
Before we open it up, I do want to share that typically we would have the, the advisor, the gifted advisory committee here with you for this presentation. So do you want to take this opportunity to recognize them and maybe their role in this?
I would.
Which, and it may have been a different role than past years, but...
Sure. Sure, I do appreciate that opportunity. Thank you, Mrs. Rye. Um, yeah, so as I had mentioned, there were over 100 participants in the development of this plan, and our gifted community advisory committee has, of course, played a significant role in that, with members from that committee serving on all six subcommittees of the plan and providing their input and feedback, which was obviously very valuable moving forward. So we certainly appreciate their support and their input with the development of this plan.
So if any of them are tuned in, we, we appreciate their service.
Yes, and we hope they are. We did make them aware of the presentation tonight.
So any of my colleagues' comments or questions? All right, we thank you. And I know we've, this has been very much a focus. There was extensive retreat time devoted to this, which is probably now why we're letting you off the hook so easy tonight.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, school calendar, some tweaking to the 21, 2021 revision for this, this coming school year. So, welcome, Dr. Robertson again.
Thank you. Good afternoon, or good afternoon, wow, we're not even... Good evening, Chairwoman Rye, Vice Chairwoman Melnick, members of board, and Dr. Spence. As you recall, in a previous board meeting, Ms. Allen and I spoke about the 2020, 2021 calendar and potential revisions that might be needed as a result of some actions that were taken to support student learning. What you see in front of you is the approved 2021, 2020, 21 school calendar. And when you're looking at that calendar, just note the first day of school, September 8th. There's eight staff days, couple virtual learning days, two Thanksgiving holidays. So just to give you a recollection of what was approved prior. Given where we are in the current situation, we are proposing some calendar revisions. And so when you look at the, the revised calendar up at the top, what, what has not changed is the first day of school, the last day of school. The breaks haven't changed either. What we did do is we eliminated virtual learning days because, go figure. We're, that's what we're doing. As a result of the four-by-four schedule at the high school, they used the, they used the, the term, term. So in a four-by-four, it's, it's not a semester, it's a term. So there's a secondary term one and a secondary term two, because they're in classes, the same class every day for a nine-week period. So on the sket, on the calendar, you'll see actually a, a secondary calendar with, with marking periods. And there's an elementary semester calendar that's nine weeks, because the elementary schedule is staying as it has been in the past. The other change that you've noticed on there is the professional learning days on Monday. Let me just tell you how excited I am to hear the excitement with teachers about professional learning, because I remember being here where it was like, PD, what? Apple Scrapple? And now we got teachers like, give it to me, I want it. Yes. That's why I'm so confident we can deliver a really strong academic learning environment, no matter whether those kids are in, in person or online, because the teachers are excited about what's, what, what they're doing. And they're, they're hungry, and we're going to give it to them. So really, what we're trying to do here is maximize the number of days that we can get out of our calendar. And these minor tweaks, again, don't affect the big holidays and breaks and all that type of stuff. They do capture our current environment. And so the major calendar differences are, are captured here. And I'm, I'm not going to go through and read those to you, just for the sake of time. I will note that, of course, November 3rd is an election day. Should by some circumstance we be in school on that particular day, it will be a virtual learning day. We're not going to have schools open for students on November 3rd, the presidential election, just because we know that that's the biggest voter turnout anyway. So should we be in school for any students on that day, it'll be a virtual day. But otherwise, I think it's pretty self-explanatory, and I'm open for any questions.
Mrs. Anderson.
So I, we've always had, on election day, it's always been a, a conference day for elementary and, I guess, a work day for teachers. So has that been eliminated also?
No, we would shift that to Monday, because they'll have the professional learning day if we're still in that scenario.
Oh, professional learning day on Monday at conference, et cetera, conferences for elementary, et cetera, that day as well? Okay. And then Tuesday would just be a virtual learning day?
It would be a virtual.
Okay, now I understand. Thank you.
Good question. Anybody else? All right, so we'll be seeing this, oh, okay, Mrs. Rys.
You might have said this, but let me, let me just make sure. So you are going to still keep the adjusted dismissal for staff and students on November 25th?
Yeah, that's the day before Thanksgiving?
Right.
Yes.
Are you, but you're not keeping the December 22nd?
Not the December 22nd.
Right, because I, I saw that on it, that's why I was questioning. How about the April 2nd?
April 2nd, I believe, is still a early release day, and that's the day before spring break.
Spring break.
I know that was important to the board for a number of reasons.
Okay, all right, just checking, thank you.
So we'll be seeing this in two weeks for consent, consent?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Policy Review Committee recommendations, which got kicked, can got kicked down a little from the last meeting, so here they are now. Welcome, Mrs. Melnick.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, School Board Members, and Dr. Spence. I'm Camilla Manetti, School Board Legal Counsel. On behalf of the Policy Review Committee, I'll be presenting the policy recommendations. You will notice that there are eight policy recommendations on here. Before you panic, I will say, although they're not important, they are not that complicated to understand. The first one will be Policy 333. This has to do with requisitions and purchase orders. This falls under Section 3, which is our business and non-instructional operations section. The major change in this will come in the first section, in which we are going to require that all requests for requisitions over $10,000 will then require an appropriate requisition form. We did not have a dollar amount before. There are minor scribbler changes in the rest of that policy. Are there any questions about Policy 333? Hearing no questions.
Oh, wait. Mrs. Manning.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Can you just clarify the reason that $10,000 was chosen?
I cannot. I will see if Mr., I'm not sure Mr. Hans Ecker is here. I don't think they had a listed amount before, and I know we've been raising a lot of our contract amounts, what we use with form, because the...
What, what do we use if we, if it's under $10,000?
I think it's a purchase, just a regular purchase order as opposed to a requisition form. I'm not sure if I can answer that exactly.
Does anybody know the difference? Anybody on policy committee here? Or you're on policy committee? Can you tell me why it was $10,000 and...
I, there was not an amount before.
He's, he's almost here.
Yeah, he didn't, he did not explain that, so he needs to explain that.
Sorry, there was not an amount listed before, I can tell you that. And with a lot of our policies, we have been actually raising some of the amounts.
Sorry, Farrell.
Mr. Hans Ecker here, sorry. That is the policy.
Did you hear my question?
Hello again.
Did you hear my question?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, the reason is, uh, we, okay, I ran down the hall. I'm out of shape.
All right, we need to give you some training, Farrell. Catch your breath.
There's a, a lot of purchase requisitions that we have that are between five, between $100 and $10,000. And every time we do one, somebody has to input that information, et cetera, et cetera. So it's timely, it takes staff time, it's inefficient. So we work with my folks in business service, finance, accounting, and purchasing, and we all agreed to a threshold of $10,000. It would eliminate a lot of the processing of paper requisitions, those kind of things.
But the, the approval process is still the same?
Yes.
It's just how it's being submitted?
Exactly. There's still an approval path with typically three, four people that have to sign off at different levels.
Okay, thank you so much. Sorry to bother you.
Thank you. Didn't mean to hold you up.
The next policy is Policy 338. This has to do with competitive negotiations, awards, small professional services contracts. You will see the major change comes in Section 3 in public notice, and relax, I can answer this one. All right, on public notice, the, there was a change made in the Code of Virginia. You used to have to put public notices in a, a newspaper of general circulation. The requirement has now changed, and we simply put this in the policy. In lieu of public notice in a newspaper of general circulation, the school division may post the public notice to the Virginia Department of General Services Central Electric Procurement website. We do participate in that, and that's been a major change you've seen over time. That's where most people will go to look for contracts on it. The changes that come through the rest of this are simply what I would consider mostly scribberner changes and updating to some of the code sections throughout there. But the major change in Policy 338 has to do with the public notice. Are there any questions on Policy 338? Moving on to Policy 342, again, in the business and non-instructional operations section. This did not have a title before, so we've added a title, financial record-keeping of individual school fund, funds. Just major minor, minor changes in here, adding the word designated in there and a couple other scribberner changes. There are no other significant changes other than the title change. Are there any questions on 342? No questions on 332. We will, we're getting, moving on to Section 759. Oops, I don't think we mixed, yeah, sorry, I got them out of order. 626. This is instruction, evaluation, new and existing programs. There are two major changes you'll see throughout this one. We have reintroduced the Planning and Performance Monitoring Committee, the PPMC, that now has a role in that. We've seen that in a couple other policies. Additionally, the office that used to be called Planning, Innovation, Accountability is now called the Office of Research and Evaluations. That name changes there, and the changes, the rest of the changes to this particular policy have to do with recognizing the role that the PPMC has in handling this particular thing. So it's a longer policy, but those are the, the only major changes. Are there any questions on Policy 626? I don't think what am I missing? Um, I still think I'm missing, I was at the end. Okay, we'll go on to Policy 713. This is appeals of school board decisions. Trying to clarify, not everything can go to the school board. They have to go throughout their policy or regulation or law that requires it. One of the things that's not appeared in this particular policy before is the standard by which you can appeal to a court. So as it currently reads, it's just reading would be, "Parents, legal guardians of minor students or adult students may appeal decisions of the school board taken at a, a meeting of the school board to the circuit court as, as, as set forth in law. The action of the school board shall be sustained unless the school board exceeded its authority, acted arbitrarily or capriciously, or abused its discretion." That's always been the standard in law. We simply have not put it in there because I think people thought they had a right, an automatic right of appeal. You actually have to go to court and prove that you have abused your authority there. We also made, want to make it clear, it had to be something that the school board had decided, a meeting, not just a general other decision somewhere the school board had dealt with. So all this has done is matched the current law. So that is policy, the recommendations for Policy 713. Are there any questions? I don't hear a question. That will move to policies, I think I have these out of order a little bit. All right, let's see. Yeah, I'm, I've got 758 here. Hmm, what did I do with these? All right, the question on 751 was the use of school board equipment. It came to our attention during the coronavirus that we had other governmental authorities in the area that needed equipment that we, that we had, that they didn't have, but they needed it temporarily, they asked to borrow it. It wasn't clear from our policy. So we've amended the policy to allow the school board to loan or rent equipment that we have to other organizations if the school board determines it's appropriate. That was just something that was not clear in the, in the policy, so we've amended to recognize that particular issue. 758 is relations with government agencies. This had a pretty significant rewrite to it on this one. 759 used to read relations with the Virginia Employment Counseling and Placement Services. The policy, in my opinion, did not accurately reflect what was being recommended, recommended. At the time it was put in, it was recommended that you would have to contact, the superintendent would have to establish a relationship with the Virginia Employment Commission and the Virginia Department of Labor and Industry to get information for secondary students about programs that were available. I didn't feel that that adequately reflected what the law was intending, so this, we broadened this particular one. Now, at this point, the school board will encourage exploration of new and developing employment trends, as well as a focus on relationships that address the employment needs of the city, city and the region. It then goes on to talk about not only having a relationship with the Virginia Employment Commission and Department of, Virginia Department of Labor and Industry, but also businesses, the military, career education programs, college programs, labor organizations, and other entities. And the purpose of that would be assisting secondary students. So after explaining this to the Policy Review Committee, we felt that this more accurately reflected what the intention of the policy was, not just a reference to, to state agencies. So we're recommending that the school board adopt the language in 539. I don't think I'm missing any, that's correct. Policy 758, again, also in the community relations section. The only addition we've made to this one is the school board is encouraged to cooperate with governmental agencies in promoting the general public interest and educational welfare of the peoples, including comma, but not limited to, colon, then we separated social services, recreation, health, safety, fire, civil defense, and law enforcement. So it's more of a scribberner change to clarify for that. And that should be all, eight policy recommendations coming out of the Policy Review Committee. Are there any questions about those policies? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Standing Committee Reports. Who has anything to share? Ms. Owens.
Thank you. I just wanted to, um, discuss really briefly an update from the last Equity Council meeting that I attended with Ms. Felton. The Equity Council met via Zoom, and they are moving forward with, looking at some situations of recommendations for dress code issues in relation to hate symbols and other inappropriate symbolism for, in schools, including Confederate flags. There's also a discussion regarding looking at the appropriateness or, or inappropriateness of some of our school mascots with Native American imagery. And so it's something that we are looking at as a, a committee, and hopefully we'll be able to bring some, some recommendations forward to the board a little down the road. We do have... a little down the road. We do have another meeting scheduled in, I don't know, another month or so. But I just wanted to share that the committee did meet, and they're doing, they're doing great work looking at, looking at where we are as a district and where we should be in line with some of the things that are changing in society and where we need to be. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll make a slight, not a correction, but a clarification to my Governance Committee email to the School Board. I meant to say that the, all the meeting, that both meetings in August would be the format we're meeting in tonight. I neglect, you know, I realized after I only mentioned this meeting, but the 20, is it 28th? Did I get that right? Thank you. Okay. Anybody else? Well, then that concludes our formal meeting. We have speakers, then we need to reconvene from this workshop for our capital improvement. Report, construction projects update, excuse me.
Just, just for clarity, it's the 25th. I didn't want that to go out publicly.
I don't trust my math at this hour now, at this point. Thank you. So we will, so we're keeping with the order of the speakers and then the workshop, or? Okay, all right.
Okay, Madam Chair, we do have one in-person speaker. It's Catherine Malley.